All right, well, good morning. I'll call this meeting to a order. Welcome to the board room on Saturday morning at 8:00. First order of business is to approve the agenda. Or do you want to do a roll call? Do you need a roll call?
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Here.
Mrs. Crisman?
Here.
Mr. Bruder?
Here.
All right, now we'll all entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, Martin can have the second.
First and the second.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
All right, well, the first order of business is the compensation study. And I know there's probably lots of questions.
Mr. President, could I just make a comp- clarify something before we get started?
Sure.
Coming in on the back end a little bit, I might get caught up pretty easy, but my question is, on the compensation study today, what are we trying, hoping to accomplish today? What's our goal today in going through the compensation study?
I think, once we hear from Amy to begin with, that will help clarify this. Wanted to give the board an opportunity to dig through the data since January 11th, first time that you've really had the opportunity to see it. And obviously, I'll give you guys a lot of credit because you're doing that, and it needed to be done, okay? I think Amy has some goals and objectives. When we get done here today, and this is our primary focus, the compensation study today, how long that may take, up to three hours when we've scheduled till 11:00, so I do want to be cognizant of that in your time. But we want a direction from the board on where to take this data, where to take it to the salary schedules, get some feedback, and I think that would be beneficial to us as directors and HR department.
Is that a direction that you're looking for? Is that for you to get s- is that direction to be done today, or is that for s- are we working on something to present for Monday's board?
It's not necessarily something to present to Monday's board meeting, no. I just thought it'd be better use of time than at Monday's board meeting when that was strictly our main focus.
Because I'm sure there's lots of questions. I mean, I have some questions, I know you all have been looking through here, and, you know, my thought also is to at least identify some themes of, you know, what looks skewed, I mean, what looks just out of the ordinary.
I understand that about the study itself, I just wanted to know what our charge was today, while we were even dealt with until it was right now.
To try to answer these questions and to get a direction from the board, to staff, to HR, on where to take it.
Yeah, what to do with this.
We thought it was important to get everybody together to discuss the details, to get some very obvious questions out in the open, so we can discuss it and then move forward as a board, and decide if there's a course of action we need to take.
So, with that in mind, yeah, I'll turn it over to Amy.
We do have Priya with C-Biz available, we'd like to get her on the phone as well. She is available for the first hour till 9:00. So, she needs to be listening to this as well, or to be able to help answer any questions.
Can I make one more point for Amy Scott? I just want to point out, so everybody knows, we did get the hard copies of the comp study on the 11th, which, if anybody tried to go through it, it's a nightmare to go through, 88 pages of comp study and 1,700 employee records, top to bottom, by hand. So, we did get the electronic version yesterday, so there'll be additional work that's done post receipt of that yesterday that's much needed. So, I just want to point that out. We have had the hard copies for more than a week, but the electronic copies are really what was needed.
You had the PDF copy of that hard copy.
Right.
But the actual Excel files were yesterday, that's correct.
So, I just want to point that out. There's still a ton of questions, everybody did a lot of work on it, so.
Okay, we'll get started. As Dr. Newhart mentioned, Priya is available between 8:00 and 9:00. So, what I want to do is just kind of, before I get her on the phone, review kind of an agenda or some things that I would like to see coming out of this meeting, and I'm sure you all have other things that we'll add to that as we go along. So, as we review the agenda, what I want, first of all, is for you all to be able to get your questions answered, that's why we have Priya on the phone first thing, she wasn't available after 9:00. So, want you to be able to ask those questions about the data that you've received, and have questions on. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Make sure you have a review and understanding of the data that you have in front of you, and the questions get answered that you need answered today. Coming out of this meeting, I really, there's a couple focus areas that I want, that I will need to finalize my next steps. One of that is addressing any questions or concerns, both of the families, the job families, and the grade, or the grading, and then reviewing the proposed salary schedules. What I have to do, and what I started doing, is a line-by-line review based on those proposed schedules to make sure that the information is accurate, people are placed on the correct salary schedules, the correct steps within those salary schedules, based on what's proposed. This is a working document, and will continue to be a working document until we put it in and implement it into place. So, nothing is finalized, we're not dealing with it as finalized, but I have to get to that point to get you more accurate data, more accurate numbers, based on recommendations we would bring back. So, those are some things I really need coming out of this meeting, and then any additional direction the board has on that. I know there's a lot of questions, I want to get Priya on the phone, and then start reviewing some of those questions. Hi, Priya, this is Amy Todd with the St. Joseph School District.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. We are at a boardwork session right now, where we're talking about the compensation study as we discussed this week. What we've done is kind of go through a little bit of discussion about what we want to come out of this meeting, but we're going to start, since I know you have availability between 8:00 and 9:00, we want to start out by addressing some of the questions that have been raised by the board with regard to the information and data that was presented at the last board meeting. So, that's where we'll need your assistance in kind of guiding that, and between you and me, to kind of fill in those gaps of information, okay?
It should sound good.
Okay. So, as far as starting, do we want to just start with asking some of the questions? I know some of you had prepared questions. Would you like a review of any of the information, like an overall review first, or do you want to start with questions?
I think we just start with anyone who has any specific questions for Priya. I know, I had a couple of questions, and then I know Eric said he-
I'll make a couple initial comments, and then you guys can run it. One, I think it's important that not only the board, but everybody in the district, and I know everybody's focused on this, but the comp studies and the actions that are taken or are not taken are extremely important to the district, not only now, but for the future of the district. And, you know, we as a board have a fiduciary responsibility to address the inequities, both at the bottom of the salary ranges, where there are issues, as well as at the top. You can't do one without the other, otherwise we're not doing our job to ensure that taxpayers' dollars are getting to the classroom where they're needed to be to educate young people. So, I think that's extremely important. The problem is, you know, the places where we identify that salaries need to be increased, that's easy stuff, other than figuring out how to pay for it. But the hard things, there's tough questions that have to be asked, and must be answered on the high side also, you know, why, what are we going to do about it? And you can't leave out the questions that have to be asked associated with headcounts in certain positions. So, we need to address all those things as a group and go forward. And I will say this, there's great people in this district, teachers, all the way up through administrators, we've got fantastic people. Where we are today is not a function of the people that are sitting in this room, or they're managing the process, but it is what it is. And it happens in business, just like it's happened here. People let the organization get away from them. It's a natural course of business. I mean, a manager sits in his office, people come in and say, "I need this to solve my problem," you throw bodies at it, you throw money at it, they don't look at the organization as a whole, and before you know it, you've got a mess on your hands. So, it's like walking past your window and trimming a branch off your tree, and every time you go past a window, at every window, you trim a branch, and you never look at it from the outside. When you look at it from the outside, you've got one ugly tree. So, we just need to clean it all up and realize it's nobody's fault, we just need to fix it. So, there's going to be a lot of tough questions asked, and there's going to be a lot of good things that come out of this, but I think people need to be prepared for the questions because of stuff that's been avoided for a long time. That's all I wanted to say.
Well, Eric touched on it too, is not only are we looking at salaries, but the number of positions, because that was one of the things I noticed, was we have like 270-some-odd more positions than the average other district, or those averages. So, there's a, you know, just a bunch of extra positions. I think we just need to justify why we have them, or do we still need them, or not.
And I might point out, those are not teachers, by the way. Our staffing and teachers is actually under what it should be, under what it should be, and the ratio of student-to-teacher, student-to-teacher ratios need to be addressed in this process as well.
If I could say something with regard to the staffing before we kind of get into this, I completely agree, we have to review the staffing overall, under, over, wherever we're at with the staffing. What I would propose is that, in this conversation, that we do try and focus on the positions and the compensation. I'm not saying that we will not address staffing, we absolutely do. I would caution the information that's presented as it is a snapshot and not a full staffing review. This was a compensation study, not a staffing review. Eric did ask C-Biz to provide any staffing information they had for our benefit. We can take that information, and it's a place for us just to look into. What I would propose, because I'm going through staffing plans with the departments, the principals right now, to understand where they're at and where we need to be. So, what I would suggest is that we are able to do that piece and come back with those proposals. We will use this information because you need answers to those questions as well. I'm just afraid if we start focusing on the staffing, we'll get away from the compensation side. They both need looked at, they both need addressed, but I would propose that we can come back with a full staffing plan to the board, where we, as directors, can present our information, so that you understand the full structure, why we are where we're at, if there are areas that we need to address, then we want to get those addressed. This snapshot is an average of the districts, it doesn't take into consideration, let's take a pair of, for instance, for an example, on the pair of positions, it may show that we have more pair of positions. We need to look further into that information and say, "Why do we have those? Do we have more individuals that have individualized needs that need pairs? Do we have more buildings and facilities?" And the classroom size would go into that as well. We operate in a higher classroom size, potentially, than other districts may, and we put pairs instead of teachers in those buildings. So, there can be answers to some of those questions, I would just ask that we can prepare that information and come back to you with the staffing piece.
So, what you're saying is you'd just like now to work on the section part, get that lined out?
All of these are positions, we will have someone, potentially, in all of these positions, okay? And we need to look at the compensation of those positions and make sure we do that. As a whole, we need to address the staffing, I agree.
I think that any question that gets asked here today, whether staffing-related or comp-related, should be noted and followed up on. And that any question, no matter who asks it, that we address that question to completion and complete discussion before we move on to the next topic, because otherwise it'll be a jumbled mess of nothing.
Because really, this, you know, to me, the staffing goes along with what we're going to be able to do as far as raises and increases. I mean, that's key to that, so I guess if that comes back to us before we have to make a decision on a final salary schedule, you know, I think that's necessary.
I would agree.
Can I make two more points?
Sure.
Sorry, just to get this out, okay, there's so much data here, I mean, there's important things that everybody needs to hear if you haven't already figured it out. You know, we've got 1,706 employees. 605 of those employees are underpaid to range minimums by a total of 2.6 million bucks. I'll say it again, 605 of our employees, and the bulk of those are teachers, pairs, and nutrition services people, okay? 605 underpaid, not to the median, to the minimum, by 2.6 million bucks. That's a catastrophe. You want to know why we have a 15% turnover rate? That's why, okay? That must be fixed. Two, we've got 479 employees that are paid over the market median, so over the middle of the range of all the other districts, okay? That's not a bad thing, okay? But that tells you they're more than enough compensated in many cases, and that total is by $3 million. Okay, 479 paid over the market median by $3 million. Here's where the issue is, of the 479 employees, 136 of those are paid over the max, over the very top end of the ranges of all the competitive districts, by a total of $600,000. So, that's the difficult side of it. Got to fix the underpaid side, we got to figure out what we got to do with the high side. And, I mean, those are important issues. We cannot stand in this district to move forward now or in the future with a 15% turnover rate. Our student-to-teacher ratios that are 28 or 30 to 1, where teachers spend eight hours educating those kids all day long, exhausted, and then go home and spend three or four hours a night grading papers and make $35,000 a year. That's a joke. So, those are my comments.
I would like to point out also Derek's comments, and this is just in a brief overview here this morning, in talking to Eric, it is potentially on those 136, or even the 479 that he's referencing, it could maybe not be the actual wage that is over.
Right. The days worked.
It could be the days worked that is over, giving the total compensation. So, in other words, not change the wage, but to reduce the days, okay? So, that, the number of days worked also has to be part of this review in determining what, where we're all going to end up.
Well, yeah, because there was a lot of them that we worked more than the other districts, and then vice versa, and then it was, there were some that were really out of whack, like reading teacher was being compared to somebody, another reading teacher that worked 222 days.
Some of the days looked like they came out of thin air.
And it's like, where in the-
I mean, it looked arbitrary.
It's like, what reading teacher works that many days?
I was just going to have Priya kind of talk to that. Priya, could you talk a little bit to how you put together the information on our contract days versus the peer districts?
Sure, and I'll speak specifically to kind of the summary by job file first, and then our exhibit, and then to the more specific employee-by-employee details as well. For St. Joe, when we list the summary by job, it would be the average across employees, so the contracted days that's reported, and presumably, you know, the HR systems in place at St. Joe are going to be what's reflected in the contract days reported for St. Joe employees. Among the peer districts, similar to the staffing data, in many instances, we did receive fairly comprehensive employee-by-employee data from those districts, as opposed to any types of averages and the like, so we followed the same approach in terms of averaging the number of contract days across positions as they were reported in those districts' employee data. I know that's not the most clear, but I mean, essentially, you know, we, beyond, you know, asking for more specifics, we simply ask for contract days as they're reported in each district's human resources information system, similar to the way we ask for data from St. Joe.
Well, in another example, there's somebody that works two jobs within the district, but there was only one job listed, so it looks like she's just way out of whack, but she does more than one thing. And that was a concern that I had at the very beginning, and I talked to another teacher who does three different things, and they're way out on the scale, like they're making gobs and gobs of money, but they're doing three different things, and that's not reflected on here. This information to me is very disappointing. I know in our first conversation, I had talked about the previous study that we had done, and that what I needed to see was district by district, how we compare to them. In this other study, each position had where we were within the peer group. There weren't any averages, we saw what it was, were pretty close to, and so we knew exactly how we compared. Doing averages, to me, it doesn't do any, it's just, it's numbers at this point, because you're not really comparing and looking to see where we are with our competitors. Because you have to take into effect, and that's what I said, we have a lot of veteran teachers, so that's going to skew the average. We have, we don't have a lot in the middle, I don't think, I think we have some veterans, and we've got a lot of new teachers because the new teachers-
Actually, I would disagree with you on that piece, because the averages, the more you have in the comparative database, they have junior and senior and bachelor degree teachers and master degrees teachers, just like we do, so the more you have in that average, the more closer you come to being a competitive comparison. I agree with the format, the format of this is crap.
This is terrible. I need to be able to see that.
But the comparative data piece makes a lot of sense.
Well, I need to be able to see the information to know how it breaks down.
I think that's also what Amy's trying to point out, and Eric as well, this has got to be reviewed line item by line item.
Exactly.
Okay, to make sure that the accuracy is there.
I've had numerous people tell me that what is in here is not what they make.
Well, especially on the, I question the benefit packing side being off as well. We've got to make sure that line item by line item, our current staff is being placed correctly, and then we can go from there.
When you say people are contacting about their salaries not being correct, do you know which piece they're looking at? Because I have had some contact me as well, and they're looking at the averages, so if we have however many pairs, they're all being averaged together in some of these reports, and then there's other reports where it's specific.
There's a group that had contacted me, and there's only two people in the average, and I said, "Well, I did ask them that, I said, 'Is that the average of your salaries?' And they said, 'No, I wish.'"
You could ignore that average schedule, I agree with you, it doesn't make any sense. You've got to look at the 6B schedules that show each individual, because those schedules are a waste of time.
But I do have a concern about people that have more than one job, just like Rory was saying, now their teacher job pays them this much, then they have a coaching job, then they have a coordinator job, and it makes, it looks like it's all just for the one position, and we didn't have a way for people to put in their various positions, and how much they made for those various positions initially.
This is for their, the information you're seeing was none of the extra duty contracts and the extra duty information. This is strictly their, this strictly should be their regular position-based salary.
So, if people filled out-
Except for Exhibit 9, Exhibit 9 combined base salary and extra duty or stipend.
But not all extra duty, not all extra duty.
Well, then Exhibit 9 relates to-
It was the stipend, the extra duty coaching, because we're paying for a different position was not included in there.
What about for like curriculum coordinators and people that counts as coaching, because it's on the extra duty list?
It's on the extra duty, and the extra duty that are on the extra duty, that's not included in their salary.
Extra days are.
Extra days?
Yes.
Yes, would be. It should be.
That made the difference between 6 and 1. Really, a lot of information, important to clarify, not only for us, but people watching, people listening, so sometimes it'll be a question.
Along with that, I'd like to point out that Exhibit 9, the way that it was presented, is apples and pears, I think you guys know this, I sent you notes on it, but the market median section had a proposed number stuck in the middle that was, the calculations were based on, that's not a comparison, so that column needs to come out, the comparisons recalculated, which I actually did it, but it's 1,700 lines deep, I don't think you want to go through it, but the point is, the percentages, the comp ratio, percentages up to the right on Exhibit 9, the way it's presented, are nonsense, so.
Priya, do you want to address anything in regards to Exhibit 9? Because there were several questions earlier in the week on that.
Yeah, sure. The reason we have that proposed salary is similar to what you see on the Exhibit 6 set of data, where if we take into account where an employee currently falls in the range, which reflects experience and the like, it's showing that proposed salary based on where they fall currently within the structure, so trying to maintain equity with where they fall currently relative to one another, relative to their own experience, and maintaining that group so that when we look at total compensation as well, rather than just focusing on the middle of the market, or that market median salary, we're looking at where they would propose to fall in the new proposed salary range.
But that's okay if that's a separate schedule, but combined altogether is, that's a mistake, it's comparing apples and pears. Comparison's actual to market, not actual to proposal plus a portion of market, it's actual to market, and then you can have a second, separate schedule that actually compared your proposals to actual to market, but that was kind of convoluted. I know you were probably trying to save paper or save schedule or something, but it was, when people look at that, and they look at the percentages, it's very misleading.
Well, and truly, I hear you on the fact that having two sets of market-based or proposed salary columns can certainly be confusing, and what we can do is split that out, so as you said, we do have one that's purely market median focused, and then the second that's a look to the comparatives resulting out of the recommended salary.
That's strictly C-Biz's.
Right, everything to the right is a proposed, everything to the right of the market 50th percentile on the 6B and 6A schedules is all coming from C-Biz. So, and there's a lot of it that has issues, by the way, I don't know if you want to talk about that now before we go into the details or what, but there's-
And that's what I want to make clear here too, that we're going to come up with our own. I mean, that's the end game, is it not? Wage and salary schedule and structure. It's not that we're necessarily taking C-Biz's recommendations in its finality at all.
No, we did ask for recommendations though, so it's not wrong of them to have given that to us, but ultimately, we have to look at it and decide how to adjust it specifically for our particular needs.
I think that misperception though, needs to make sure that we're getting it communicated straight right here today though, this is not the final, again, recommendation, it is just that, C-Biz's recommendation. We can do whatever we want to do.
So, it's not finalized, and it's not reliable?
Correct.
I think it's important to point out, and I'm glad you said that, Robert, because that's an important point, but there's many of these recommendations, and Priya, don't take this wrong, I know somebody besides you put these schedules together, but there's many of these recommendations from C-Biz that make no sense. For example, the market 50th percentile in the competitive markets should really be the midpoint of the ranges that are proposed in most cases going forward, where there's a lot of these ranges that are proposed that are off the charts higher than that. It makes no sense, and when I look at, and unfortunately, the first page is mostly administrators, so don't take this wrong, when I look at administrator that's paid way more than the market median, and you're recommending a range that's even higher, and a proposed step adjustment- you're recommending a rage, range that's even higher and a proposed step adjustment that's even higher, that makes no sense at all. That whole step, proposed step adjustment, particularly all of it on the first page of 6B is crazy in my mind. I mean, I've got teachers that are making $38,000 a year where you proposed a $1,000 increase, and you've got administrators up here that are already way over the market median that you're proposing $20,000 and $30,000 increases. That's crazy.
We, Robert and I would like to talk about that piece, because as you look at the administrator piece, a, a piece of this function, as you review the salary schedules and what C-Biz comes back with, is doing a look at our organizational structure and our hierarchy and how that should look. So in talking with Dr. Newhart, we had it set where you have your superintendent, associate superintendents, if, if those are ever approved, then you would have directors, and then you go down and you review your organizational structure like that. That is part of that review process in determining where those people fall in, in a range. So that's why those schedules, that, that piece, I can say is not C-Biz. That is a, is a discussion of our organizational structure with Dr. Newhart.
The proposed step adjustments and the proposed ranges, you guys?
No, placing, like, like, placing-
The proposed grades and proposed steps, right?
Where they, they should fall.
Where the person should be.
I don't have a problem with that. The problem is what's proposed under the side.
And what family.
It's the compensation, that's the problem.
The compensation side is, is what fell, you know, what came about. The question was, it's like, if you have a, as you well know, ever since day one, in regards to the organizational structure of directors, okay, you have some current tech directors, that's a fair term, is that correct? Or, or, or managers, like data managers, being recommended to go to directors, okay? It's not so much from a compensation side, as I've always alluded. It's more from a check and balance side of having those people at the table to help offset the discussion regards to.
That's perfectly fine. Perfectly fine. But the problem is, is somebody's adjusted all these ra, I'll give you an example. I won't mention the title of the, of the position, but there's about 10 of them like this on the first page. Person's being paid 70-ish, I won't give you the exact number, because then you see who it is. The market 50th percentile's 80. The recommended range here has a midpoint of 104 and a top end of 124, and the recommended step increase is $20,000. That makes no sense. So.
What, was that due to moving that person from a lower level, Priya, to a?
It was, yes. If I can just, and, and again, I'll, I'll speak as generally as possible so as not to draw attention to anyone's position, but the, the standard approach, your first round approach, would be, you know, to look at that position and, and the market 50th percentile of, of roughly $80,000, and assign that position to a given salary range based on, or identifying the midpoint of a given range that most closely aligned with that $80,000. We then went through a discussion about equity and hierarchy, observed and recognized at St. Joe, and may have made adjustments to the proposed salary range based on how St. Joe values each given job. So there may have been an upward adjustment, it sounds very likely, like there was an upward adjustment in this case, in terms of the grade assignment that placed them in a range that's higher than the market 50th percentile would otherwise indicate. And then the proposed step is basically on what their current step is. So in many cases, as you look down the first page where you see the proposed step is 20, it's simply a function of the employee already being very high in their current range and their current step. And so the result of that is that the recommendations are maybe placed at the top of the proposed salary range.
The, the problem with this here, it's a, it's a misappropriation of district funds in the wrong areas that the districts needed. And, and if you look at that whole first page, I mean, I'm on 6B, I apologize. I'm on 6B.
I agree with Eric. 6B is the best schedule to look at.
Both of, both of either one's fine. But I'm on 6B only because that was what the PDF file was. 6B2 wouldn't even come with the PDF. It is with the, the second electronic version that was sent last night. But the PDF and hard copies, I'm on 6B.
One or two.
But there's nothing on the PDF. It's one, I guess.
6B1. Well, 6B2 is the one that has the proposed steps and the-
Well, so does, so does-
Oh, here's 6B1.
The one that I have doesn't have anything.
Oh, yeah, 6B1 doesn't have the step listed. Right. So the, the-
It's 6B2. It's the same guy.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Priya, but the, the 6B, there's one and twos. The ones had to do with a proposed range on the salary schedule versus a step salary schedule.
Yeah, this is 6B2.
Yeah, yeah. If you're looking at the hard copies that were provided when I was there, it's 6B2 should really be the exhibit of focus, and that looks at steps throughout the organization as opposed to only teacher and teaching-related positions having steps.
Well, in, in-
The 6B2.
I will say, on, on some of those, this line-by-line review is going to catch some. I, I'll, I'll just throw myself out there in, in my position. On our current administrator salary schedule, it steps from one to, I don't know what the top step is, we'll say 60. Well, director level doesn't start until like a level 33. It doesn't start at level one, because all administrators are put on the same schedule. So when she sees the information I provided on whatever step, she thinks I'm at a 20 at the top of the scale. I'm not. I should be at a 10 based on that. So that kind of information, and that's the experience and education piece that steps you out. So there's a lot of that, that this line-by-line review will catch as we go through. So some of that, I'm not saying that, some of that is due to what we talked about just now, and, and the structure and organizational structure that we have, and some of that is due to us having to really go in and vet out that information line by line.
Here you go. Couple more comments. On the, the first page of 6B2, I mean, the way I look at it, given the compensation and the market medians, and even if you weed out the, some of the crazy range proposals, there's only three administrators that would even be involved, Mark, of needing an increase, because they are undercompensated. The rest of these people are morally compensated within the range. Again, I won't list any, any, any names or directions, but I mean, if you want to talk about it in some detail later, I mean, we're happy to talk about it. The other big issues with these ranges, again, on the first page of 6B2, if I look at, for example, maintenance managers, okay, and I myself have hired maintenance managers, supervisors all over the world, and our, and the market median data that was provided here looks accurate, okay, and they came from C-Biz. It's $59,000 a year is the market median. We've proposed a range for these maintenance managers that has a top end of almost 100 grand. Those ranges are crazy. And you've proposed $30,000 increases for these people? That's the kind of stuff we've got to clean up and get off of these schedules.
See, this is, it's exactly why we wanted this, was to-
It makes no sense.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, it's-
But when we, when, when the ad hoc committee asked for a, a study, a compensation study, there was a feeling that people had been placed in positions, given their personal value to someone who was creating that dollar amount. And they didn't want people placed just because they were somebody's friend, or, or, you know, somebody thought that they were great, so they got a little more money than maybe they should have. They wanted a study to show what people should be making in those positions, and then we could make a decision, you know, let's put our people on that same where they should be, not where people might be because of past relationships they may have had with admin, you know, superintendents or whoever. So I think it's really important that we look at the, the actual market percentile and not be talking about, well, we think this job is worth more than the rest of the market thinks it's worth. The whole idea was to have what the market thought it was worth, and adjust ourselves appropriately, because we had gotten a little out of control with that.
I agree.
If I'm understanding what you were saying earlier about that, that's why I'm commenting that way.
Our review of this, and, and, and a typical review of this would be, C-Biz comes back with this information. We, we vet that out as far as making sure that positions are graded, I'm, I'm not talking about compensation, I'm saying categorized and graded in the correct families and grades together. So, does it make sense to, to have two positions in that same grade? Are they, and these aren't, this isn't a person, this is, this is a position. And is the level of responsibility in those positions similar? Positions may do very different things, but the level of responsibility, and that's what, what we do. I'm not sitting there valuing these positions or people over, so I don't want any perception out there that we're valuing people more. We're trying to get the people based on their level of responsibility in the correct categories. And then sometimes that ends up looking like this.
Well, then that means we've, they don't belong in that category then, if the market compensation is in this very different place, I guess. Maybe we need a separate category.
Yeah, the real issue is here, can you go out, can we go out as a district and hire a principal or an administrator, a good quality principal or administrator, whatever, for $100,000? The answer is yes. Okay, so I shouldn't be proposing big increases for them. Can I go hire a qualified teacher and retain them for $35,000 a year, or $28,000 a year? No. That's why we have a 15% turnover rate. That's what's got to be evaluated. And if I can just keep going on this, because otherwise I'll lose my mind. You've got the same issue on the low side also with some of these proposed ranges. For example, the teacher bottom end ranges, the grade one, step one is proposed at 35. I think that's too low. I mean, you look at the turnover rate we've got, and, I mean, those teachers up, I mean, we ought to be talking about minimums of 38 for grade one, step one, and for grade two, step two, 39, and push those, push those bottom end numbers up. I mean, that's, I mean, you've done it for years in business. You know those adjustments on the bottom side are just as important as the top side at the entry level, to attract the right people and then keep them once we get them. You've got the same issue on maintenance skilled workers, okay? And I don't know whether a maintenance skilled worker count is right or wrong. We've got a lot of them. I don't know if it's right or wrong. But this proposed a top end of like 43,000 or 42,000 dollars a year. I know from hiring maintenance people all over the world, you're not going to keep this highly skilled maintenance person if you top them out at 43,000 dollars a year. You're not going to do it. They're going to go someplace else. So the top end on those people needs to be closer to 50. So you've got some nutty stuff at the top on the high-paid people with these exuberant ranges that have been proposed, and on the low side, we, we've got some stuff that we need to clean up. And I know that's part of what you're saying. You're going to take this line item by line item and come back and say, here's what we really think.
We will, understanding that you want strictly to look at market and not us to grade the positions.
No, you have to do that. But you've got to take into account that the market comparisons, not, the average is not everybody grading one step one. The market is the average. They've got junior people and senior people and people in various steps, just like we do.
I agree.
So it's a very comparative number. And to skew our midpoints on the proposed ranges away from that market 50th percentile, doesn't make any sense.
Priya, can you kind of talk to that a little bit as far as, as how those, kind of take us through how those schedules and those ranges and steps are prepared?
And before you do that, because there are two points to that, that Eric has already focused on, but one is some of those ranges are so above the market 50th percentile, and then like the maintenance skills, the, the ranges are below the market 50th percentile, and that doesn't make sense.
Sure. And, and obviously, the underlying philosophy really seeks, and, and this is going to differ for each organization, but how you balance the, you know, market-driven, purely external competitive approach with internal equity. Because in the first round of the data, once data is collected and aggregated, so that we do have a market 50th percentile for each position or the vast majority of positions, as I described earlier, our goal then was to build salary ranges for representative of schedules we see at the comparable district, and then assign each position to a given family just based on their job function, and then within each family, assign it to a proposed grade based on their market 50th percentile. So identifying midpoint of the range that most closely aligns with the market 50th percentile for the job. The next step then, and, and as Dr. Newhart says, the recommendations are by no means set in stone. So, you know, we do look to, to the district to provide guidance as it relates then to internal equity. So if, for whatever reason, the district feels that a given proposed grade resulting from the market 50th percentile inaccurately represents the value that job brings to the district, there may be a recommendation for an adjustment. So some of the grade ranges you're seeing that don't appear to align with the market 50th percentile are very likely the result of an internal equity change.
But when you say internal equity, are you talking about how long the employees have been with us? Is that what you mean by that, or just how?
No, that, that's simply a, this is how we value a job. So it's not an employee-specific decision, it's a job-specific decision. And we ask the district to provide feedback related to how one job compares to another. So in some cases, the market data may suggest that two jobs should be in the same salary range. The district may have felt otherwise, and the result of that was that one of those jobs may have shifted up or down in terms of the grade assignment. The, the final step then was that more employee-by-employee approach, where we were looking at the current step and simply making a parallel to a proposed step based on where an employee falls currently in the range.
So how did that feedback come to you? Was it through one point, or through each individual department? Or how did the feedback come to you? Because I'm still mesmerized by a $97,000 a year maintenance manager. That blows my mind.
Um, you know, Amy, I think you, you can probably give some feedback on this as well. The bulk of the information came to us through Human Resources. We did have some department-specific email feedback as well.
So there was discussion and review, and then we've had more recent discussion with regard to these positions and where they should fall. Any recommendations that we've made to C-Biz, I've documented those here. I would have to go through the ones that I did, specific to a position, which we can do if you have these positions that you want me to look at. I don't recall one for the position you are, you are speaking of at this point, but it's some, something that we can look into.
Well, one thing I think we should do as a group is all of us should send a list when we're all done of our, just individual questions to the whole board and to them, and let them address those questions and come back with recommendations. Because the bottom line, we've got to fix, we've got to fix the hemorrhage on the bottom side where we have huge turnover rates and people are underpaid first and foremost. The rest of the stuff can be massaged out and fixed over time. But you've got to fix the hemorrhage now. And we have to be accountable on the, on the high side. But I, I mean, I myself, I mean, if I, I have basically 30 questions that I wanted to go through in this meeting, but I'm going to be quiet and let everybody else ask their questions. And if they cover it, they cover it. If not, I'll ask it later.
I, I think that is the general consensus. Correct me here now if I'm wrong, that the, the bottom end is where we are going to look at first in bringing it up.
We have to. That's embarrassing. Well, it's not, it's not valuing our staff. I mean, now that we have this data, we have to address that.
But, but you also can't ignore the top end. You've got, you've got to fix some of that, because some of the ones way over the max, they either got to be frozen or reduced, because, one, you've got to figure out how to pay for the stuff where, you know, we're upsizing. You can't go back to the public and say, yep, give me taxes. I mean, you're going to have to do that in the end, but we've got to do our diligence and our fiduciary responsibility to manage both sides of the equation.
You want to be tried, be as efficient as you can be while moving this bottom end up.
All right. Can I ask a question about some of the things we, I just want to make sure that everything's included here. When, when you talk about the salaries, and of course, we have individuals here, but do these salaries now that these people have reflect the, the extra duty pays and things like that, that we've just done within the last six months?
No.
So, so these salaries here, the, the extra duty pays and things, they'll, they come into play when?
He's talking about what's rolled into their salaries.
No, no, I'm talking, I'm talking about the things that we've done, like we, we started paying more money for ADECA assistance and, and ban people and sponsorship.
They didn't assess that versus the other markets.
Right now, the extra duty has not been assessed. So the extra duty assignments, the pay ranges that, that were set up for- the pay ranges that, that were set up for those have not been done. The focus has been on the, the primary positions and looking at that base pay for those primary positions.
So you see apples to apples, so you got base in other districts, base in this district, and extra duty's extra duty.
Okay, but what I'm saying is...
What about those?
My, my thing is this, so, we're gonna, we're gonna adjust, say we adjust the salaries to where we all want, off of information we have now, then, next year, those salaries all change to all those people that just got the, the new pay that we just okayed in, in these last few board meetings. So now we've got people, more people above, and that's what we're not trying to do, right?
No, but extra duty's extra duty.
Because they're getting the pay because they're doing extra.
Right, they're getting the pay for the extra duty, so the base should be comparable to the market basis, and then if somebody's doing an extra duty, that extra duty pay shouldn't be in that comparison, because they're getting paid to do something extra. It should be separate.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
If you add it together, you're gonna have apples to apples.
Just wanna make sure that everything is included in what we're talking about.
And this is a constant moving target, Mark, because just like we're trying to prove, you don't think every other district out here is doing the same thing, so it is a constant moving target.
It's, it's gotta be a constant moving target, because as we go forward and, and things are better financially, so to speak, and we give raises, everybody's pay's gonna go up, so that's gonna go up and above this market study or the ranges that we're trying to shoot for right now. And so what are we, what are we gonna do five years from now when we've given, say, three, three percent raises? And now everybody's above the market study? Are we gonna do another market study right away to see, make sure that the three percent raises are adequate? Or, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, I, I don't know.
This can't be a one-time, this cannot be a one-time study. Now, I'm not suggesting we do this comprehensive of a study every year. Most districts, most companies don't do that, maybe every five years or more.
I understand, I understand, it's just for our conversation.
And, but we have to do internal reviews where we, as an HR department, are reaching out and getting the data and information so that we are staying competitive, and then when we come to suggest increases, we have looked at that data and information so we can stay competitive between that period of time. So this has to be an ongoing process, and I think potentially that maybe didn't happen. I, I, I can't say what has happened completely in the past, but we have an obligation to continue to review this. If we do this one time now and I don't look at it for five years, we're right back where we're at.
Most companies will do a stu-, a study every three to five years. And the other thing they use as a measurement point is the turnover rate, they're looking at turnover rates. If that turnover rate grows above five percent, something's wrong. You've got a management problem, or you've got a comp problem.
And so then, the, so then as we, if we have a problem and we bump our salaries to, to, to stop the bleeding, now all of a sudden we're at the top and somebody else is at the bottom. And so what are we gonna do then when the next study comes out and says, oh, you guys are paying these guys way too much money? Are we gonna, are we gonna freeze all the salaries or cut the, you know, I'm just talking, I understand this is a moving target. This is a work session, and so I'm just trying, I'm just throwing out ideas.
We're trying to get to the median, we're trying to get all of our positions to the, the midpoint, the median of the market today, the fiftieth percentile, meaning fifty percent of districts pay less for that position, fifty percent pay more. So that's where we're trying to get and, and, and get to that point for now.
The market.
Then, as increases come into play each year, all these other districts are gonna be doing the same thing, and that's where our comparisons with what other districts are gonna be doing come into play, because we wanna stay with them. We don't wanna lose that fiftieth percentile market, we may wanna increase it at some point and, and be more competitive in the market. So as we're doing these fixes, all these other districts are doing the same thing.
You need to know, you need to know that information and then decide what you want and what we, or whoever the board is at the time wants to do.
So I'm throwing it out there because I know, like what you said, it's a moving target, we gotta continue to do this so that we know where we're at, because salaries aren't gonna go down, they're gonna go up.
Yeah. The, the, you brought it up, Mark, which is an excellent point, you talked about percentages, it's real important that as you go forward with whatever proposed increase process, whether it's steps or whatever, you know, five percent across the board for everybody is step increases is crazy, because that inequity spreads, five percent for a hundred grand person is five grand, and five percent for a forty grand person is two grand, so that disparity gets bigger and bigger and bigger. You can't just do across-the-board percent increases, should be based on their position overall.
On these families, right?
Yeah, the other key to all this, and I think that's what I wanna make sure before Priya's gotta get off here, is not only getting the right compensation, but it's making sure we get people placed in the right families and grade, okay? Priya, where do you see that at? Because I know you gotta go at nine here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and, and I would say, I mean, to some degree, for example, the, the questions that were submitted by the board that Amy sent to me via the Excel file, I think feedback like that is very helpful. We can always, you know, take a step back and, and undo some of the equity adjustments that resulted in great changes to take that more market-focused approach. Conversely, you know, it can be a matter of us simply looking at equity again and ensuring that, you know, the way that various administrators are assigned makes sense, given the market data, given St. Joe's perception of the value, um, and again, not just at the top end, but at the bottom end as well, um, to ensure that there is alignment with the market as well as St. Joe's internal value of the job.
I would like to see that, I would like to see the, um, proposed range match the market fiftieth percentile, so that our proposed mid...
The midpoint.
The proposed mid matches the market mid, or is close, you know, a close amount to it. And then if there's something that stands out as belonging in a different class, I would like that noted, so that we could look at that and decide what to do about that. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
If there's one manager in with a bunch of support, for example, and that seems strange, then let's look at that and decide what to do about that.
And we'll go back and look, because I believe the very first time that this was presented, the preliminary data, we had not gone through, I know for a fact we had not gone through any of the inequities. So that would be reflective, truly of that. Um, I guess I, I need, I will need direction from, from the board on, on how much involvement, I mean, where do you want my role, Dr. Newhart's role, to be in, in that piece versus the board? Are you wanting us to come back to you with that? How, I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the involvement that you want in the review of those grading, grading of positions, because normally that would be a function of HR, the directors, supervisors that are involved with these positions and understand that.
Why wouldn't you do that at, at, the way we operated in the past, why wouldn't you do that and bring it back to the board? Let us review what, what your findings are, and then, then come back to you with our recommendations or, or questions.
We can bring it back with what it shows true market, and then bring it back with what our recommendations are, which is kind of what, what you have seen in the preliminary versus what you see today, but we can bring it back in maybe a cleaned-up format on one.
I will just make one comment, if your recommendation comes back with all these massive proposed step adjustments on page one, don't come back.
We're gonna want it to match the market, Mark.
Yes, can we, if we're gonna look at some positions with the market fiftieth percentile, why aren't we looking at all the positions like that? That's the part I don't get.
Well, I think this has given Amy and Dr. Newhart good direction that, you know, we, I think we've kind of agreed that the market fiftieth percentile needs to be the medium proposed range. I mean, that's a big step, I think, just getting to that point.
That'll change everything here, yes.
I think the teacher minimum range needs to be higher, that needs to be thirty-eight, not thirty-five. A couple more comments, just so people understand the data, of all, of all the underpays, you have over four hundred and sixty teachers underpaid, okay, to get them to some sensible rate. You've got a hundred and thirty-three paraprofessionals, okay, these people don't even make twenty thousand dollars a year, they're underpaid by seven hundred thousand dollars just to the minimum range. I mean, good night.
Right.
Okay, and then you've got nutrition services, these nice lunch ladies and people out there that are killing themselves to feed the kids, you've got twenty-four supervisors that are underpaid to the market minimums by a hundred and thirty grand. You've got eighty-eight nutrition services workers that are underpaid to the minimums by three hundred thousand dollars. They don't even make twenty thousand dollars a year. We gotta fix this stuff. So we talk about focus, teachers, paras, nutrition services, we gotta fix it.
But as part of that evaluation, um, some of those low salaries, we need to find out how many days or hours they're working, because that could be part of it, is, is they're working half, half time.
And there were several teachers that were like, were like twenty thousand dollars underpaid, and I was just like, whoa, now wait a minute, but looking at it, I think that must be a part-time, that's, and there were several of those.
So we need to separate all of that.
But that's, but it really wasn't noted, if I hadn't thought about myself, that would've gotten a lot in the world.
The line, that line-by-line review will catch those, those types of, of issues. That had not been done on the line-by-line comparison, so.
But when you go through the paras, if you just go through the list, they're all making fifteen, sixteen, that, is it, it is an anomaly, there may be one here, one here, but all the way down there's...
Not that, yeah. Not, not, I'm not suggesting those, I'm talking about the, the ones that maybe they're working part-time or half-time versus full-time. Those are the things. Nobody here is suggesting, I think we're all in agreement that we need to, we wanna fix this, uh, just as much as the board does, that's not a question.
There was a bunch of reporting structure issue questions I had too, and I know you don't wanna focus on that, but there was some strange stuff in here, like it showed five full-time substitutes in the maintenance department. What is that?
What's a substitute in the maintenance department?
A full-time substitute shown as part of the maintenance department. There was some crazy stuff in there.
I would have to look at those, but those may be in the, uh, for the custodial group for, in the buildings that have to have.
Substitutes for custodians?
Yeah.
Because they have to be there for the boiler and all that stuff, some desks be there.
Okay, that's, we need to understand that. Two, what's the reporting structure for librarians? And I ask that because librarians are very nice, wonderful people that do a great job, but their salary structure was way out of whack. We have librarians making a lot more than teachers in many cases.
You got, we have an issue with librarians, and librarians have all brought that to my attention. We, we allowed for an avenue for people to bring back issues that they saw within. I want to hear those issues if people have concerns, so we can look at it during this review. Librarians was one of those. We have, from what I understand, elementary librarians, we have certified and non-certified. What happened with that is that they have, uh, the certified librarians have been on the teacher's salary schedule, this took them off and showed them...
Who did they report to, though? Because I was told they were, they used to report it through operations instead of to the principals. So they now report to the principals?
Who did you say they?
The librarians.
Who did you think they reported to?
I was told they used to re-report it up to operations.
Oh, that I...
Any directors can help.
You, you, what is it?
I was one of those librarians.
And you reported to the principal or to the...
Operations?
No, I reported to the head librarian.
And she reported to who?
Uh, she was at the TMC, so she probably reported to operations.
We need to understand that, thank you.
That would've been rich.
You have to understand that library program, because there is non-certified librarians in the, in the, in the elementary schools, and there is one or two certified librarians who are basically their supervisors.
Their managers.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, that was very helpful. She needs to come to all the meetings by the way. That was very helpful, thank you. Because there was stuff in here that didn't make any sense, and we need to...
That's where I started with the story.
Chris, do you have any librarians reporting to you in maintenance?
No, they used to report to this chief operating officer.
Yeah, that's right.
So they're not reporting to anyone?
No, they never have.
Is there reporting to principals? Is that correct, Brian?
Well, the director reported, is their building principal, but we have a library coordinator that is the next level, and then the coordinator reports to our office, CNI, that's the chief.
Thank you.
What's the story with the process consultants in special ed? I mean, according to the ranges in the market meetings, way, way...
Eric, can I interrupt a second, but Priya? Priya, do you need to go?
Uh, yeah, I apologize, I do, um, obviously, you know, if there's additional questions for us, we're happy to answer those, and, and I will work in the meantime with my team to, to roll back some of the equity adjustments so that we are taking a more pure market-focused approach and then work within the uncertainty of reporting that back.
Yeah, we've got some more to do, Priya, working through, uh, HR with Amy, uh, to get this to where we need to have it.
Sure, understood.
Okay, thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you all, bye.
Sorry about that, Eric.
No, okay, can I go back to that?
Yeah.
There was, there was one thing that stood out in the study that was like a big glaring sunshine. The process consultants in special ed are extremely important in this district, and whether we need ten or twelve or five, I don't know, that's, you guys need to determine that, but according to the other process consultants in special ed in the other districts, I mean, we're overcompensating those people to the average market median by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, it, it was, as collectively, compensation was way over the market averages.
If you take a look at that, that is also, I believe, due to the number of days worked. Our process consultants are working two sixty, and when you look at other districts, they're two hundred, two twenty.
I don't think they work two sixty.
I would say two hundred.
Something just a little less.
I would say two hundred.
Two hundred.
Yeah, just from there, you're fine, if you wanna address that.
I can't see you. I'm sorry. Um, I don't know really where to start, I think if you, if you look at their job description, in St. Joe, we do require that they have at least a master's degree, and they also must have additional graduate hours to be able to provide, um, to give IP access. In order to do that, because we, this district does not have school psychologists, and most other districts do, so our staff have additional credentials that they may not find in that position elsewhere. So they're all gonna at least have a master's, and I expect they always have five years to do that successful teaching experience in addition to those additional credentials. They also have always worked an extended contract so that families move and they wanna introduce their children to our, our school system, we can get started on their evaluations and IEDPs prior to the first day of school. I don't know that all districts have that expectation, and they also are expected to evaluate and provide support clear through the last day of school. So we don't shut down special services and providing evaluations in April, we will work through the last day of school, because that's right by kids, in my opinion, so they have an additional ten days. I also do know that they had received a mileage stipend, and that was rolled into their salary for this school year, I think it was around four hundred dollars. We also have fewer, um, process consultants by number of students than other districts our size, and no school psychologists. So they are taking on some additional responsibilities and work.
The question is, I agree a hundred percent, by the way, with your commentary, that was helpful, but the question is whether or not those additional qualifications are so much more than the other districts, because most of these are being paid thirty to forty percent over the market max ranges. So that tells me that you've got people that are twice as qualified as anybody else in any other district we compare to, or we're paying people too much money. I mean, the numbers don't lie.
Well, that, that's your opinion, but those salaries would have gone through an approval process and would have been vetted, I believe, appropriately. Most of them have been veteran teachers and probably have many years of experience, and at least one of them has a doctorate degree. I would say several of them have specialist, and they all have additional credential to be able to provide intelligence and stuff.
I'm not saying change it, I'm just, just gonna ask the question, because it stands out like a sore thumb, I missed one.
Well, they're a very important part of our work.
The caseloads are high, they tell me that the average is one-twenty, a lot of these people are servicing two-twenty and over.
They are working very long hours to get their work done, and almost all of it, a lot of it has to be done outside of a normal school day, because your captive audience are our children, and they're only there from eight to three, and then the evaluation report writing, and sometimes meeting with parents takes place after school.
Like grading papers and...
Right, well, in the other cases, it went to, I think it's just important we take a look at all of them, make sure that they're correct, and that what we're doing is correct, not so much that it's a tie necessarily is out, but that it gets evaluated too.
Thank you, Denise, that was helpful.
Okay, what other questions?
You really wanna ask anything?
Go, Eric.
Yeah.
You've got a lot.
No, I, the other board member was asking, I'll just be quiet.
I got one question.
Go ahead, Martin.
Can I go to that?
I know, you're good too. Let's, yeah, let's take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come back for more questions. Let's just, yeah, let's take a quick five-minute break and then we'll come back for more questions.
It's kind of a.
I think I remember that.
Yeah.
Feel the issue.
I understand.
But is it because what you're trying to offer? What's your turn on what's your turn on right in here? Tell me if it's fifteen percent.
Yeah.
No, certainly we're.
Question at the time, Alan, some of the schools where we were made to listen to did not have location for players. Okay, so where were they pulling that?
So you can reset that with one.
Yeah, they can reset if they are now.
Right, but you can reset a system and one people, who knows? Okay, I thought you said a system.
So it's huddies to your.
That's what I heard.
Yes.
No, we don't.
I think that's interesting.
Talk about it.
He said, no.
We had a year's.
That's too much.
Well, that's what you're adjusting to. So that's the center. And then we have to discuss what we want to do with it.
Should have set a timer.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go let's go through if anyone else has any other questions, any other comments about anything that they saw in the study.
Mr. President, I don't have any uh any more questions. I I just want to make a statement that I feel we made a point in giving the charge to Amy and Dr. Newhart. And I think now is the opportunity for them to bring back to us what we're requiring of them should be the next order of business as far as this comp study now. Because it's clear that the six of us around this table uh are not satisfied with what we have and are not uh fully feeling that we have enough information to make permanent decisions upon what to do with the salary disparage discrepancies. I mean, so um just just wanted to throw it out there that we, at least from my perspective, the next order of business should be that we will bring back to us something that we can work with to make a decision, cause we can't make a decision.
I I agree. I mean, we gotta look at that market fifty percent times here and yeah, good point, Martin.
I agree. I think you hit the nail on the head.
Other questions?
Eric has a list.
No, let's go.
No, no, I told Martin I told Martin we've covered the bulk. The other my stuff, a lot of the other questions I have are centered around uh organization structure and staffing counts, which needs to be evaluated because there's a lot of them. Again, not teachers, by the way, it's other support staff and things like that. The counts don't look, they don't look right from organizational structure, but that, you know, that's just a million mile high view of it, so.
I think that comes down to where we actually need to see where we like in the study, where we actually rank within these peer groups that we're looking at. We need to have a little more background on the peer groups as well so that we can see how we compare to them on free and reduced lunches on all of that stuff. And the building sizes, class sizes, those sorts of things make a huge difference.
Eric had sent me a list of questions that that we're going through with regard to the study. But I would ask if I've kind of documented the different questions that have come up today, but if there are additional questions that come up as you continue to review and sift through the information that you would like addressed, if you could send those to Dr. Newhart's and that and that way I can make sure to get those. I want to make sure when we come back to you that we've addressed all the questions that we can. Obviously, there's always going to continue to be questions. Between those questions, the comments and what I'm hearing today, between the concerns that are being sent to me from employees, I'm going to continue to work with C biz number one on the market and then the salary structures specifically based on those markets. If I go through a one a one-by-one review of this data, I want to make sure that I'm doing it on a salary schedule that's usable and we're not going to blow that salary schedule up. It's a lot of work. So I will start that process in review to have that back to you. Um, we will have.
By the way, there has not been anything paid to Cbiz yet, correct?
I wouldn't pay him.
Has there been some minimum?
Fifteen, the very first payment should have gone to them, the fifteen thousand.
I'll I'll comment this with Lori because there's a lot of data here and some of it's very valuable, but the format it was presented in, the timing we got in, the fact that we didn't get the electronic files we asked for.
Nothing timely.
I'm not happy with Cbiz at all.
And quite frankly, we proved this last spring. They didn't work on it till, what was it, August, September, when we had that.
Puzzled when the contract was signed, right?
There wasn't a contract signed, I think. So, yeah, and we I literally thought they had been working on it that whole time. There was a lot of stuff that they could have gotten done that didn't get done. So they didn't start off on the right foot. Was very plain and clear with her in direction on how the information needed to be presented. Just the other day, one of the insurance brokers was saying, I could give you data that's this much or I could give you this much that's really usable, which is more valuable. Give me this that I can use, it's user-friendly. I don't need all of this.
I agree.
And that's what we're saying. When we come back to you, really the focus needs to be, for instance, more on the oh, the six B two schedule.
You don't need to waste your time with that other nonsense.
Yeah, to where it comes back to where it's manageable, understandable data.
Yes, that we can use to make sure we have the right number of employees in the positions and that we have the right, you know, scales for the positions.
As I've said all along, we need to know what it's going to cost to run a successful school district. We need to have it clear for the community's sake, for our sake, for everyone's sake. We know what we need, so when we go back to ask, this is what we need to run a successful school district. The community is completely on board, open, honest discussion with them.
But I don't know that this tells us what we need.
No, this doesn't.
This tells what we have. So I I think there's a huge, right, I I just want to say that out loud. There's a huge step from saying, this is what we need, hold on, this is what we need. Okay, now, this is what we have. Now what is it that we need? Do we need two hundred people doing this? Do we need more process consultants? Do we need a school psychologist? What is it that we need to go forward? And then what are the markets, what are the fifty percent market that we can pay? And how much is that going to cost before we go further to the taxpayers?
And to say, do who do we, what do we need? Do we get the what do we need from from Amy? Cause she's HR or do we get that from?
But they have they have market information. They know how many employees the other market have in the position.
What they don't know is the number of sped kids we got or the number of free and reduced kids we got, the number of buildings we got. That's what they don't know.
The the issue here on the staffing, this is my.
But you do know, so, yeah, yeah.
This is my opinion, okay. We need a recommendation back from them that's going to deal with the six B two schedules. We need a recommendation back from them on the organizational structure because what we do know is we've got about eight hundred and thirty teachers where we need a lot more teachers than we currently have because the student-teacher ratios are out of whack, they're underpaid, pairs are underpaid. So we need a recommendation back that takes care of that. We need a recommendation back that takes care of the high side of the issue. From an organizational standpoint, we've got seventeen hundred and six employees, only eight hundred and thirty of them are teachers, okay? I said it before and I've said it again, that tells me we are way, way, way top-heavy. When I say top-heavy, I'm not talking about administrators downtown, I'm talking about everything outside of the building. It needs to be evaluated and even some in the building that aren't educated. So not saying what to do with it, I'm just telling you from a business perspective, it's way top-heavy. There's count and and I said before, it's a natural proliferation for organizations over time to let that happen if they don't manage it closely. Cause people throw bodies at problems. That just happens. It happens in business. I get asked every day, hey, I need to hire three people over here to solve this problem. Well, show me why. Let's do a cost-benefit analysis. Let's do a return on investment analysis. Let's walk the floor and see if you really need those three people. In many cases, they don't. You change the process, you add one, you get away with it, or you even save one. That has never been done here.
Well, there's no doubt our teacher-to-student ratio in order to get to desirable level has got to be addressed.
Yeah, we haven't been throwing bodies at the classroom.
Yeah, I'd really I'd really throw bodies at the classroom than all this other outside stuff that we're dealing with.
I agree.
Bodies at the classroom, bodies.
To reduce uh uh classroom size.
I can guarantee you, I will bet you my paycheck, if you lower student teacher ratios from where they are today, not to some crazy level, but if you take a one to thirty down to a one to twenty. 1 to 22 level in many cases, test scores are going up, period. They're going up. The teacher's going to be more effective, they're going to be less tired every day when they come to work, they're going to have less papers to grade when they go home at night. That's money from taxpayers that's getting spent where it needs to be spent in educating kids. Let's put the money there.
I agree. I'm sorry, that, that should be, that is it. That is it. And that's not rocket science. I mean, no, no, I mean, we all agree with this. I mean, you know, you, that's where it needs to go, yeah.
That you can stand in front of the public and say, "Guess what, I need a tax levy. Here's all the things we fixed and saved, but we got to add teachers over here and we got to bump salaries up so the turnover rate goes down, and we can keep the good teachers we have, and we need this much for a tax levy." The public's going to go, "All right, let's go." Just my opinion.
Good points.
You, this is the person that's got to be clear on this. I mean, she's doing the down and dirty legwork, okay?
No, I feel like I'm very clear on where, what we need to present and how we need to present it back to the board, and I'll work with CBIZ to do that. I will also work with Dr. Newhart to do, to base those recommendations. I will.
Can you tell us, then, what, what the task is that you're going to do, just so we don't come back to another meeting and go, "Oh, no, no."
We thought you understood.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe a timeframe.
Yep.
It kind of needs to be quickly, doesn't it?
Yeah.
We're running out of time.
Yes, exactly.
For everything. Because this has to still go back to meet and confer.
You're looking, trying to, you've got a month of February to really probably get this turned out.
This needs to be fixed for 16, 17. You don't come to us and say, "We ran out of time and we can't get it done until the next school year," because I'm not going to stand in front of a teacher and say, "Hey, sir, we couldn't take care of you." I'm not going to do it.
To get to the classroom size ratio, Eric.
That I understand. You've got to look at your available classrooms and buildings, I get that.
Who needs the money part?
The money part, to try to get to 600 teachers and to move them to median?
I don't even know if you need to move them to median, but you've got to get them in the range. I'm more concerned about the ones that are way below the men's. Get them at least in the range.
Just, just to go back, as far as what my plans are, is I'm going to be working with CBIZ on several pieces. One is, what I hear the board wanting to see is, let's put the comparison, and we have that, but we have it in really big, big formats and two different presentations. The market data, strict, straightforward market data, what that looks like as far as where they're placing the positions, CBIZ, where that market data shows. And building those job families and grades just strictly based on the market data. You want to see that, but then, we will make recommendations on the internal equity piece that she spoke of, and we will have that outlined on why, what, and why we think those changes or those job families or grades are reflective of our organization. So, you want to see both pieces of that information. From that, we will build and review the salary schedules. The step schedules that we've proposed will probably be used, the job families that we've proposed, other than seeking those positions, will probably be used, but we need to review the steps and the amounts in those areas. After that is complete, then I can do the analysis, person by person, on where these positions would fall within this proposed, based on market and based on recommendations. And you can see both of those.
They want the proposed mid to match the market.
Right. Yes.
But you've also said you're going to look at the internal equities with that, which to me means the overpaid side has.
You've got to deal with it.
All of it.
She'll make recommendations about that.
All of that, yes. So, the recommendations, once we have that, then we can see what those costs, total costs would be, and we can make recommendations based on, on those total costs, on how do we fix, what needs to be fixed, in total, over, under, all in between.
I would like to see the current salary schedule when we compare to a new proposed one. And because we have not had our current one there, so we can't go, "Oh, yes, this is definitely better," because we don't have the other one there.
We'll bring that back with, with the presentation. Those are available if you want to review those timeline as well.
Yes, just with all the stuff. It's easier if it's all together.
Okay.
And I agree, this, this does need to go back to mean confer.
Why is that called mean confer? It's negotiations. Why is it called, it's negotiations, people, we're negotiating.
Education, Eric.
I know.
We're meeting.
You meet with the representations of the, of the bargaining unit, and you talk about what needs to happen. It's called negotiations.
Not how our, our policy.
It's called mean confer and policy. So, we follow policy.
Good answer. That was a very good answer.
And that's exactly why, no doubt.
Exactly.
You're looking right now, January 25th, say Monday, our next scheduled meeting after Monday is February 8th, then the 22nd. I think we need to have an update on February 8th, and I think we need to have a finality by February 22nd.
Yes. I wouldn't mind having another one of these meetings if we needed to.
I don't disagree with that.
I think it might be beneficial to be able to actually do it in that timeline.
Yeah, earlier.
So, between that February 8th and that final.
Certainly, so that it's finished by.
Can you bring your calendars back with you?
Monday?
Monday. I don't mind Saturdays, in fact.
Saturdays aren't good for me.
Seriously?
Yeah, because my travel schedule's getting really getting nutty, and my Saturday's going to be my own, don't-blow-your-brains-out time.
Otherwise, you're probably looking at a Monday in between or a Wednesday in between.
Wednesday's work for me. Mondays, usually I have meetings.
That doesn't work good for Martin.
Oh, yeah, Martin's never here, that's all.
I mean, I know, I don't like to give what my Saturday is either, but I seriously would.
Why don't you bring your calendars with you Monday night? Are you here Monday night, or what's your staff?
I'm here this Monday.
Okay. But from a standpoint of having an update on February 8th, and then to seek a, hopefully a finality with some degree or shape or closeness by the 22nd?
Just whatever file you send it, please send it electronically in Excel format so we can slice and dice and compare and analyze things. At least, that's how I like to look at it. PDF file, all that does is.
I couldn't get it to open, and then I looked back, because my email still isn't working correctly. And so, then I went back again and looked at a different one, and then I found the password, and then I could open it, but it was like 10 o'clock last night.
Does anybody else have, real quick on that, any problems with that?
And right now, I can't even get my computer to check it out.
Because you mentioned that too yesterday.
No, I couldn't open, because it said something about encryption, but I just downloaded it to the computer and I could open it from that. I just bypassed.
I couldn't get my district computer to open, and I had to keep all my district stuff on that. I can't even get the darn thing to open at all now. Because that's what MSBA has told us, is that our district computers, that's where you're supposed to keep your stuff. So, I don't download it to my others. I couldn't even open the darn thing.
You couldn't get on your email?
I couldn't open my computer.
Debbie, we need to work with them on it, get some answers there.
You need to bring that in.
Well, they worked on it last week, but now I can't even do anything.
That would be frustrating.
Okay, so, do you have any more questions? Anything that Amy needs to be considering as she?
Start with that stuff.
This is helpful. I mean, I think we've accomplished a lot in that time to get to the direction where we needed to go. So, I know you've got a lot of work ahead of you. Thank you in advance.
All right. The next item then is amended budget, fund balance report.
You've already discussed all this plays into finance, and one of this was kind of giving an update where he's at with those two items. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
In regards to the fund balance report, I'll have that for you tomorrow, or not tomorrow, Monday at the board meeting. I'm looking at it, our fund balance this year compared to previous years has increased. A lot of that's to do with the way we're allocating funds now. We're no longer putting funds in debt service or in capital projects, so it's all going into Fund One and Two. So, our fund balance actually has increased this year. I think it's right, a little, little worth of 20 million. In the past, it's been between 13 and 15 million. And that, that again, it's because we're allocating funds differently. We're putting all funds in Fund.
Fund One and Two.
Fund One and Two.
Instead of four.
Instead of four, right. And, and debt, we're not putting any money in debt. We were putting a little bit, when you guys ran your no-tax increase, you had to put some of your local funds into debt, so that a way, you didn't have to increase your debt, save your taxpayers' money. So, we're no longer doing that either. So, that's, that's why your fund balance is actually going to look higher this year than what it has in the past.
Now, you're actually going to take a look at what the December 31st fund balance report is, though.
That's what I'm calling back. Right now, we're just a little bit north of 20 million. In the past, it's been 13 to 15.
And why do, why do you look at a December 31st fund balance?
For cash flow purposes, because you've got to make sure you have enough cash to get you through December. We just got our big check from our county, we get it in January. So, you know, halfway through the year, everybody's like, you've got to have, you know, we don't get all of our money consistently.
Right.
You know, the biggest chunk of our money starts in January.
Well, then, last year, we had to borrow money for a short time, remember?
Yes.
Because we, we had a cash flow problem.
No, see, I wasn't here then, so I didn't know that we didn't do that.
Yeah, we paid a right amount.
You've got to do tax anticipation, you know.
Pretty quick, but still, I'm saying, to make payroll.
But the way we're doing our accounting now, we're okay now. But as we deficit spend, we're going to eat up that money, and it will gradually decrease to where we can't make payroll, and then you give your tax anticipation up. Anyway, I'll have a more detail, I'll give you comparisons to the previous years and examples of why we're, where our fund balance is at. Okay?
Next one.
Amended budget?
I've been working on the amended budget, and I'm still learning some of the programs that we have and stuff, and some things were left out of it. So, basically, right now, I'm going through line item by line item. So, what I'm going to have for you tomorrow, I'm not confident in what it is. You know, I always said along, all along that I'll have it for you by February 8th. I will have you a true amended budget by February 8th, but my initial, it increased $3 million, the deficit, and I don't like that number. I, I think there's some inconsistencies in some of the other budget line items, and I talked to Dr. Newhart about some of these things. So, like I said, I'm reviewing them now, I'm going through line item by line item, trying to figure out, I mean, we've still got some open things and some things that should have been closed last year, that are still showing up as expenses, and I don't know if that's because it got carried over, we didn't.
He's referencing, still showed in payments to, for construction of Oak Grove and Cardon Park, for instance, and we believe that that shouldn't be there, should be taken care of, but there's some double checks we've got to take a look at on it to make sure.
I want to make sure it's clean, it's as concise, I can, I can back up and identify true numbers, you know, I don't, there's a lot of inconsistency.
By line item.
By line, that's what I'm doing right now, I'm going to do every line.
That's the point, I think you really need to understand. We are getting closer and closer for that line item to building level type review that you wanted, okay? It's been a work in progress. Before, it's always been this 30,000-foot view, so when you're digging down now into the weeds and you're seeing, what, what the heck is this, you know, budget expense for? It takes some research and, and that's what they're doing.
Any of those things that are anomalies like that, that can't be justified, they need to be cut. So, that needs to be.
Absolutely.
It isn't like that's what we got in the past, so let's spend it again. If you've got an anomaly that you can't explain or justify, it should go.
And that's what I've, I've been working with the directors, the department heads, getting answers on, you know, if I have a question, I ask somebody, you know, because I don't know everything about the district, I've only been here a year, so I'm still learning the district, you have more programs than what I had at my district, so, and I've got to understand the programs before I can start, you know, getting rid of things, because we do different things. I mean, every district is a little bit different. We have standards, but we still do things a little bit different. But we're getting there. I mean, I've got a full staff now, and I've got them, they're all working their little hearts off every day. I appreciate each and every one of them. They, they're putting in a lot of hours, and they put up with me every day, and that's a good thing, so.
Thank goodness for us.
I agree, totally.
Okay, 3.3?
We've addressed some of these things under organizational structure and planning already. Facility-wise, I kind of want to give you an indication, coming into Monday night, you will have the BLDD update that is on the board docs as a digital format for you to view, and just like we have asked, they've provided updates to the current building information. So, I would assume, and this is a board decision, the next step is to what scenarios or what continuation you want to use BLDD for. Do you want them to run scenarios? Do you want to continue to engage them to run scenarios, those types of things?
The data they're bringing back, is it going to actually show open classroom count by building?
Uh...
It needs to, because if it just says student count, it makes, it does us not.
It has, it has a student count, it's not an open classroom.
We need an open classroom count by building that's validated by somebody, administration.
Well, that's a good point. We're, we're, we're looking at that currently, got feedback from the, the building principals, and the example that I'm fully, fully aware of is like Limburg and Pershing. You go to Pershing, it's not that you couldn't potentially have three rooms available to put kids in, but then you go put an art teacher on a cart, you're going to combine band and music, and probably use a cafeteria.
It's fine, but you just show us that, here, we've got three open classrooms, but if we utilize them, this happens. We just need to understand that. Showing me we've got 230 rooms and we could have 260 tells us nothing.
Right.
Because we don't understand that particular part.
Correct. You're seeing, you'll see overall, the, you would think, in general, that when you had 16, 18,000 kids back 20 years ago or whatever, that you'd have the classroom space. But what has happened since that time, that classroom space that was once maybe used for a classroom, is now a computer room, or is now a sped room, or is now an ISS room, or is now, you know, band with, with music or strings room.
Why don't, can we see this, and people should jump in, but by building, we've got to see how many classrooms there are in total, how many are used for actual teaching, and if they're not used for teaching, what they are used for by building.
Right.
I agree, and that document that we have from BLDD does not, does not say that.
No, it just has.
No, it doesn't, it says head count. Brian, is that an opportunity, we can go back and, and get that?
We don't need BLD for that, we can do it ourselves in a week.
Oh, I'm sure the principals could instantly tell you in their own.
In a day, right.
Like that, just call them up and they'll tell you.
Brian has helped put this information together, and so far, I mean, I, we've got four rooms available at Limburg, is that correct?
Just show us on the spreadsheet.
Well, you know, and which ones are used for what? Why are they, it seemed to be open rooms when you just look at them, but they're not actually, and so then what is your adjusted open room?
That information's included in their report.
In the report that he has? Okay, okay. That we don't have.
No, you don't have it yet.
Okay, okay.
But that's going to be from a, from a planning to a visionary facility plan, to get it into a CSEP, if that's your goal, or a separate facility plan, it's going to take what degree you want to engage any further with BLDD, okay? What scenarios do you want them to run? What I mean by scenarios, do you want the 6-8 setup? Do you want to look at scenarios for closing whatever, not to mention anything here this morning or to, to a, to high school, you know, you can, you can have them run any scenario you want run, is what I'm saying.
They have the software.
They have the software to do it.
And they built that software when we were doing PACT.
Right, they have now made a killing off that, marketing that nationwide.
They put a lot of work into it.
Any questions there? I will have YMCA and family guidance in regards to facilities on Monday night. We have ran into a snag with an addendum that was approved by the board in, in March of '14, that was an addendum to the original document that was not approved by the board. was not approved by the board of March of thirteen. Okay, you with me? That original YMCA agreement by, uh, the Y in the school district, there is not supporting approval by the board. But in working with the Y, they have come back, we have verified it, now this is all the way up to even yesterday, there is an addendum, uh, of March of fourteen referencing that March of thirteen document, that the March of fourteen addendum was approved by the board.
Previous boards, though, can't saddle future boards with additional ongoing liabilities without some type of provisional out clause in the agreement. So, that seven-year agreement with no out clause, no matter who approves, is not right.
I'm just trying to, I think they're willing to try to work with us. There is some legal steps we need to get figured out. Nothing's ever as clear-
Have you discussed that with our leaders?
I have not yet.
I don't know what I would tell you to do.
Okay. Again, I'm trying to keep you abreast of the situation.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all. There's a first and a second. Uh, Mark?
Soft talk. Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yep.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dodger?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good work everyone.
Got a direction, then that's really what we needed after.